Good evening. Welcome to the city of Battle Creek, Michigan, in the Battle Creek City Commission meeting for January 21st, 2025. It is seven o'clock. We're going to start off with a invocation in a moment of silence, and then we're going to have our pledge of allegiance, and I'd like to call upon our vice mayor to lead us in the pledge. If everyone could please stand for a moment of silence, and then we'll have our pledge.
Vice Mayor Sherry, so Sophia?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is a roll call. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Commissioner Karsarski, here. Commissioner Lacoste?
Here.
Commissioner Lance?
Here.
Commissioner Morris? Mayor Banky?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
And Vice Mayor Sophia?
Here. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a proclamation, and I just want to, for the record, state that we have International Holy Cross Remembrance Day in the memory of victims of the Holy Cross and honor the survivors as well as the rescuers, liberators, and further proclaim that we, the people of the city of Battle Creek, should strive to overcome intolerance and indifference through education and remembrance. For the record, we have put that on the file now. Next item on our agenda, Dan Jones. I want to thank him very much. Because of the cold weather, Dan and I collaborated and talked about sharing some information with the community about what's taking place, and warming centers is a big item that we want to share with the community. As most of the commissioners came in tonight, there's four people across the street at the church, and we're going to try to convince them to go into a warming center. Dan?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, city commissioners, mayor, members of the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about the Haven of Rest's impact in 2024 on Battle Creek and Calhoun County. As a community, we've come together to ensure that no one in Battle Creek has to face a night without shelter, without warmth, or without food, even in the most challenging circumstances. And tonight, I'll give you a little overview of what we did in 2024, some statistics, and then an update, as Mayor Banky mentioned, on our warming centers, which are crucial during extreme weather events like the one we're having right now. 2024, if you put one person in a bed overnight, that is one bed night. In 2024, the Haven of Rest provided 37,586 bed nights of shelter. If you do the math backwards and divide by 365, that's about 100 and some individuals every single night. Tonight is no difference. Every one of those people had a safe, warm place to sleep, and this represents a lifeline for so many in our community, from individuals seeking temporary shelter to those working to rebuild their lives through our recovery programs. In 2024, we served 1,713 unique individuals. That's men, women, and children from our community, and even veterans from across Michigan who came to Battle Creek and Calhoun County, and each of these individuals represents a story of resilience and hope. And finally, meals provided. Our kitchen served 87,450 meals in 2024. Again, doing the math backwards, that's about 240 meals per day, ensuring that no one in our care went hungry. And these meals are made possible by the generosity of volunteers, the food bank, and local partnerships that reflect the spirit of this community. And so today, as temperatures plunge and the wind chills are down around 20 below zero, zero to below zero kind of temperatures, our warming centers that we began in December open whenever the temperature reaches 20 degrees Fahrenheit or below, not negative 20, but 20 degrees or below. We ensure that people can stay in 24/7 in both our men's shelter and the Inezmuch House for family and children. Even people who are not checked into our shelters can walk in the doors. The folks you see right in front of First United Methodist Church were on a first-name basis with them. I've seen Chief Bagley's officers stop by and visit with them to do wellness checks. I went and spoke to them last week and offered them sandwiches and told them it's going to get cold this weekend, that they should walk right across the street to the shelter and come in. And so they're aware of us, they know about us. The only reason they are out there is they choose to be at this point. Since the warming centers opened in December, we've already served many, many individuals, and we are ensuring that they're safe and cared for. And again, the only reason someone's outside in a night like tonight is they choose to be. Our shelters are open right now. If those folks walked across the street, they could come in, we would feed them, we would care for them, warm blankets, the whole nine yards, and tomorrow morning, we would feed them again. And we would keep them in as long as the temperature is below 20 degrees. This initiative, the warming centers, is also being offered through First Congregational Church, serving families, as well as the LGBTQ community, and Share Center, which is offering a warming center, and last night had over 40 people. Together, we are all stepping up to save lives when conditions are most severe. And finally, an acknowledgement and a call to action, I want to express my gratitude to the city. The Haven of Rest would not be able to do what we do without the city's ongoing support. We would not be able to do it without the generosity of our donors, and we would not be able to do it without the dedication of our volunteers. Together, we have created a safety net for our community's most vulnerable. Looking ahead, we know the need for warming shelters will only continue. We invite the city to deepen its relationships with us and its partnership as we expand these lifesaving services, and again, ensure no one in Battle Creek has to face a night without shelter or warmth. Thank you very much.
Dan, thank you. Are there any questions from the commission at this time? Any questions from the community? No questions, Dan. Thank you. You're free to leave.
Thank you. Stay warm.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is chair noting any added or deleted resolutions?
There were none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item on our agenda is petitions, communications, and reports?
And there were none.
Finally, we're going to move to the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
This is a public hearing to obtain community input on a substantial amendment to the 2024 Annual Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant to reallocate funds to the rehabilitation of 614 Northeast Capitol Avenue to create housing for individuals recovering from opioid addiction.
Declare the public hearing open. I'm going to turn it over to, unless you, did you want to speak?
I did.
Okay.
I'm Helen Guzzo, manager of community development. The city gets about 1.2 million of community development block grant a year and about 300,000 of a home investment partnership program. The reallocation of these funds, they're going to be, for your approval, the reallocation of a later agenda item, are for projects that have not moved forward, and we need to, projects that don't move forward affect our timeliness, and they're not effective use of federal funds. And so I just wanted to say that today, Lauren Kendall, who's the neighbor at 607 Northeast Capitol, she was concerned about crime and trash in her neighborhood. She would be across from 614 Northeast Capitol, and she said she does not support this establishment of this recovery housing in her neighborhood. And I told her that I would, because of the weather, she's older and couldn't come. So we do have other people to speak about the need for this housing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guzzo. Are there any other comments during this public hearing? Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Joseph Chastain. I reside at 60 Grant Street, and I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to speak about the recovery housing community today. My experience, so first and foremost, I'm a graduate of the recovery housing program in this, in this general neighborhood, actually, just a couple small blocks from this building. And my experience, I wanted to share just a small portion of my experience, strength and hope, with you about the recovery housing community, as well as the program, but first and foremost, the program that I graduated from. It is Recovery Services Unlimited Housing Program. And first and foremost, my entrance into the recovery housing program was an all-inclusive stay at a very well-manicured and well-taken-care-of property. The people there greeted me with open arms, a very warm welcoming. I was held accountable, first and foremost. There were requirements to that program that were very necessary. They held me accountable for my actions. They, as well as holding me accountable, they connected me to a therapist, a one-on-one, every week for four hours a week, with a peer recovery coach who was just like me, who was free from substance use. They also provided me with relapse prevention groups, as well as cognitive behavioral therapy groups, every week, three times a week. They were very personable, and my gratitude to that program is, I don't, I cannot put in enough words how grateful I am for Recovery Services Unlimited's program in this community, and their outreach, and just the personable level that they approached me with at all times through the 90-day program there. I, I just, I'm approaching, it's bittersweet, I'm approaching my nine-month mark in two days, free from substance use, and it's not just the fact that I used substances and I felt that I had ruined my life. It was also that miracle whenever I entered that recovery housing program.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I had to go through both.
Congratulations.
So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Lee Yates. I reside at 277 Taff Court, Apartment 16, here in Battle Creek, Michigan. I also am a participant in the RSU Sober Living Program. I just completed that program. I want to say that if it wasn't for the RSU Sober Living Program, I probably wouldn't be here today. I'm a firm believer that they are instrumental in saving my life. I had a heart attack back in October when I first entered the program, and I believe, honestly, if I wouldn't have been in that program, I might not have made it through that incident. I was able to identify what was going on because I was, I was in the program. And the aftercare program, like the Sober Living Program for RSU's, was available to me when I got out of Sacred Heart, and our, our success rate for entering rehabs and when we come out of rehab is, without an aftercare program set up, the chances of us making it are slim to none. We got to have as many available aftercare programs that we can get in the RSU Sober Living Program and other programs like it is essential, and addicts like myself becoming productive members of society again. I'm a grandparent. You know, it's a 90-day program, and you will be amazed with yourself if you come into the program with an open mind and a willingness to do whatever it takes to turn your life around, and the Sober Living Program is instrumental in helping you with that task. And I just, I really believe I wouldn't be here today without them. And to know that they're there for other people that come out, it's, 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 it's a truly fantastic program, and I can't say enough about, I just, I wouldn't be here without them, and...
Well, congratulations, and thank you for your comments. I know it's not easy.
Thank you very much.
And we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments for this public hearing? Yes, John?
John Kennick, 234 South Avenue. I'm going to speak shortly when you come up to Resolution 62 against this particular ordinance and this...
John, we're at a public hearing right now.
Right, I understand that, but this is related to that one you'll be coming up to shortly. The amount of money that's going to be spent from taxation is $297,868. Where does this money come from? It comes from two different sources. One, taxation, and two, debt that the citizens of the United States have to pay back, or the citizens have to pay back. Two, government for taking out these loans. Now, currently, if you pay taxes to the federal government, the U.S. debt currently is more than $36 trillion, which means if you're a taxpaying citizen, you get to pay back $323,000 per person. Social Security debt is more than $225 trillion. A taxpaying citizen currently owes back to Social Security $1,8938,000. Total for these two, if you're a taxpaying citizen just to the federal government, not state or local, you owe back to the, to the federal government right now $2,261,000. This here is simply a charity, and I have no problems with people donating money to charity. That's great. But this charity is not what government is supposed to be about. This $297,868 could go towards fire protection or the debt you are taking out right now. There was a saying from an author back in the day, back in the 70s. He said, "If you want to help homelessness, don't become homeless. If you want to help feed the hungry, learn to feed yourself, to be self-sufficient. If you want to not get addicted to drugs, don't use drugs. If you want to help the illiterate, learn to read." Every time you do these things, you become unfortunate, well, fortunately, less of a burden to everyone else in society. When the citizens or this government decides that it realizes that it can vote itself money from the public treasury, that is the end of the republic. Benjamin Franklin said that. Charities are great when it belongs at home. It does not, it is not great when it becomes many systems that are paid for by government that unfortunately run themselves into the ground. So I would definitely say when you get a chance to vote against this, it's not against the people that have unfortunately realized the situation that they've become in, but that is not a taxpayer's concern. That's their donations and charity. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Next item on our agenda is public comment regarding any specific agenda item. If you'd like to make public comment regarding any specific agenda item, please raise your hand, and we will acknowledge you to come forward to the podium. You will have four minutes to make your comments. Please state your name and address before beginning your comment and indicate which agenda items you are speaking to. Are there any public comments? Yes. Reese?
Good evening. Reese Atkins, 84 South 23rd Street. I will be speaking on two resolutions tonight. Resolution 62, which we just had the public, and my concern with this one is we've already had this given funds out under this address to somebody different. We had to go through, from what I'm understanding, thanks to the city clerk's information, we had to go back through a lawsuit or something to get the money back from them. I would be seriously, before I give out this much money to anybody, we need to look at, okay, what guaranteeing are we have that we give this money to somebody, that they're actually going to do what they said? They've already, we've already had one that said, well, I'm going to do this, 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 on this address, and it not happened. So we really need to look and see what type of guarantees we can have that they're going to do what they say they're going to do before we give out this much money. The other one is going to be 63, which is a marijuana shop located at 492 Cavalier Avenue Southwest, which a lot of us would know it as the old Wright Beauty Academy, where I have many times gone into when it was open and got my hair cut when I lived in the neighborhood. There are two different churches that are not too far from this establishment that, I know according to Vice Mayor, they said that the planning council said that it's within the, the frame of where it should be. Yeah, I wondered that a little bit, but how many marijuana shops do we really need in Battle Creek? I mean, we've had several of them already closed down. I mean, we had one that just opened up, wasn't even opened up six months, and it's closed its doors over on Main Street, which I do believe is the city of Battle Creek. Why are we keep bringing these things in that are not going to make it? When is it time? Enough is enough, and we say no more to these facilities. They're only going to be here for a short period of time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll go to resolution...
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support?
You guys are pretty quick tonight.
Good job.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you for the support. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, please vote on the consent agenda. Seeing none, please vote on the consent agenda. The consent agenda has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 60. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Under the Michigan Municipal Planning Commission Act, PA 33 of 2008, as amended, the city is required to annually prepare a capital improvement program of public structures and improvements, also known as a CIP. This resolution seeks approval for the capital improvement program for fiscal years 2026 through 2031.
Move to approve Resolution 60.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 60. Are there any questions by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 60? Resolution 60 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 61. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This project consists of comprehensive interior painting and carpeting services to enhance the aesthetics and comfort of the flight inspection's field office. This resolution seeks acceptance of the lowest responsive responsible bid for the field office interior finishes project from Hackett Construction Company in a not-to-exceed amount of $198,880. The city manager or their designee is also authorized to execute up to 10% in total for city-initiated and pre-approved change orders.
Move to approve Resolution 61.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 61. Are any questions from the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 61? Resolution 61 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 62.
This resolution seeks approval of a substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, program to move $297,860.05 to the rehab of 614 Northeast Capital and $200,000 from transit bus stops to the minor home repair program.
Move to approve Resolution 62.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 62. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioner Simmons?
So, a couple of questions, comments, I guess. First being, there was a suggestion that the funds could be utilized for fire stations or other city projects. As my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the CDBG funds have specific uses that those funds are tied to. So if you could talk about that. And then second, it was also brought up, and we've already made an investment in this property and it didn't go very well. And if we're entrusting some more public funds to another entity, and I've already, I've already got the answer on this, but I'm hoping you can share this with the public as well, the entity that would be utilizing this facility, their track record and we heard from a couple of the residents in the program, which seemed like they were successful, but as far as for an organization, their stability. If you wouldn't mind addressing those two items.
Yeah, sure, Commissioner. And obviously with CDBG dollars, yes, they are restricted in terms of how we can use them. I'm not saying they couldn't be used in any way, shape, or form to support something related to fire. It would depend on what was in our consolidated plan or in our annual plan on any, in any given year. But typically speaking, yeah, they're used for very specific purposes. I'm going to ask Helen if she'd come back up to the microphone and talk a little bit about what's going on with 614 and the entity that we're going to work with here.
So, I just want to clarify that Community Development Block Grant funds, you can work to strengthen neighborhoods in low and moderate income areas of the city. So we've got five neighborhood planning councils in our core and the money needs to be spent to strengthen neighborhood conditions. So fire and police are activities of general, just the responsibility of local government and Community Development Block Grant dollars are meant to enhance neighborhood safety and housing in low and moderate income areas. And we are in the midst of our consolidated plan for 2529. We've identified local priorities. You guys will be approving our new priorities for the next five years by, it's due May 15th. So there'll be another public hearing and the consolidated plan will come before you for approval in April. But if you remember about a month ago, we went into closed session and we talked about 614 Northeast Capital. It's a rental rehab project. We invested with Tim Howard. He was a local real estate developer and then he did it to land contract to Matt Kuiper Building Services. And Kuiper Building Services has told us that they would sign over the property because they're behind in their water bill and their taxes and they have not performed a contract. In May of 2020, we signed a contract to bring three units of affordable housing online. This is currently a vacant building. I came to work for the city in September of 2023. This project became aware, my awareness, when the mayor contacted us about squatting in the building. There were homeless people in the building and the owner was allowing that. About a month ago, I went to make sure the building was secure. A window was open and the door was open. So this building has been used by homeless folks. It's been a kind of a blinding influence on the neighborhood. The city is looking for the current owner to deed it over to us and we would do the rehab and then we're going to do a request for proposals. And Recovery Services Unlimited is one example of who would bid on that. They've run recovery housing, they have three recovery houses that they've run, one on Grant, two on Grant Street and one on Cliff Street behind the Y. So Hope, Pastor Ryle of, he runs Hope House and he's another person would be interested in bidding. So we would choose the most qualified. So we've not made that decision yet and we have not taken ownership of this building, but we can't rehab it unless we have funds. So this is reprogramming federal funds that have to be used for low and moderate income neighborhoods. So there's definitely a need for recovery housing in our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Are there any other commission comments? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 62? Resolution 62 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 63. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution seeks approval for a petition from MCIJB Investments LLC on behalf of 492 Battle Creek LLC requesting a special use permit for an adult-use marijuana retail facility in the T3 Neighborhood Commercial District located at 492 Capitol Avenue Southwest, Battle Creek. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on December 18, 2024, and after due consideration, recommended that the Battle Creek City Commission deny the petition for a special use permit based upon the findings that the application does not meet the special use standards listed in 1281.05, Section C, Section 2, B, C, D, and G.
Move to approve Resolution 63.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 63. Are there any comments by the commission? Chris, and then we're going to go to Patrick.
So I'm hoping staff, sometimes this is kind of a tricky area and the Planning Commission before has recommended disapproval of these things, but when it comes down to the law and our application of our ordinance as it stands and state law, we're kind of bound. So if you could explain, if, and maybe the city attorney would like to take this one on, if, if that meets that criteria, if we're really bound as the law is written to grant that special use permit or if it is, if it is something really doesn't fit within the confines of our ordinance and state law.
Yeah, and Commissioner, I'll let the city attorney speak to the legal aspect of that, but as you indicated, I mean, when these decisions are made, right, they're made on a basis of determination as provided for by either state statute or local ordinances. And in this case, there's a very specific set of criteria that our staff evaluated in terms of whether or not this application should be successful. The staff recommendation was for approval, but the Planning Commission felt differently about some of the specifics of the, of staff's analysis of the basis of determination. So they, as indicated in the information the clerk provided, they did specify sections of that in which they felt that there was not alignment or it was not appropriate to move forward with the application based on the alignment or misalignment, as it were in this case, with the basis of determination. So, you know, what that means for the commission in terms of the legal ramifications of either supporting or denying this, I'll ask the city attorney to address that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I think, to put it most simply, at this point, the matters before the commission and the commission gets the final say on whether to approve or deny the resolution here. And if you want to, you have the basically discretion to either adopt the recommendations of the Planning Commission, in which case you would vote to reject the resolution so that it wouldn't, the approvals wouldn't be granted, or you can choose to instead adopt the staff recommendation that was made to the Planning Commission, which would be to approve the special, the special use here. In terms of the legal ramifications, I guess the obvious one is that if you, if you vote to approve the resolution, that basically overrides the Planning Commission and grants approval. If you vote to, if you vote to the negative here, that would essentially adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation and deny approval.
Can I ask a follow-on question? Because I know these things, if we disapproved, can be appealed to a high level of the state. And in your opinion, what, what do you think the state's idea would be behind the, I mean, that they actually meet all the criteria and that, and we would be overruled?
At this point, the approval wouldn't so much be appealed to the state as they'd be subject to judicial review. So at that point, it would be, I guess, I can't really second-guess in terms of the commission's reasons, but at that point, if, if there were a disagreement as to the commission's decision here, my job would be to defend the commission's decision in court as basically proper under the ordinance to the extent that I can do so legally and, you know, factually there. I will say that basically, as you discussed the issue here, stating reasons on the record for why you would support or be opposed to this resolution would assist in essentially, you know, defending the decision if that were ever to become an issue, but your reasons are your own. So I don't want to, I don't want to speak for you here, basically.
Thank you, Chris. Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. From my understanding of the training we've gotten on these approvals of this, oh, excuse me, special use permit, it has to meet all the criteria that's presented. And if we don't, there's an explanation and it looks like there's been a few explanations by the Planning Commission to deny this. Is that, is that, am I correct in that, that if it has to meet all of them or it doesn't get passed? I mean, we are the final say, like you said earlier, but is that what the legal ramifications are? I see quite a few questions by the Planning Commission in the notes here.
I believe that in general, they have to meet those, but there's, there's a certain amount of discretion in whether they've met specific factors, basically. So a lot of cases, I believe it would, it's something of a judgment call, both on the Planning Commission's part and on this body's part, to essentially make the decision of whether or not those factors have been met or not.
Okay. Is there any, is there, we get an answer on which ones were actually met and which ones were not met according to the rules or just what I have in the notes?
Yeah, and what you have in the notes are basically what the Planning Commission had called out as the particular criteria that they felt were not met. The staff report looked through there, the ones and felt that the criteria met. Again, as the attorney said, these are discretionary. So they, it, everyone's going to have a different opinion. We just did not feel we had enough information to say that they didn't meet and more to say that they did meet. So all the answers are correct. And so you get to make that decision. So I wish I could give you more information.
No, that's, it just helps the public understand that there is certain criteria and if they're, if they're absolutely met, we have to approve it. But under what I'm looking at, there's a lot of question marks and stuff that needs to still be taken care of in this application.
Yes.
So thank you for your help.
Any other comments by the commission? Commissioner Chris Simmons?
Yeah, thank you for coming back. And I guess just to address our counselor's statement about putting it on the record, I guess I would concur with some of the questions that the Planning Commission had brought up about not meeting those requirements. And so I'll be voting no. I'd be happy to see them actually meet the requirements and come back to us with a complete application.
Commissioner, yes. Commissioner LaCrosse?
I also wanted to state for the record that I will also be voting no based on the same criteria. So should you need that to defend us.
All right, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I disagree with the determination on B, C, D, and E. Number one, this is one of the poorest census tracts in the city of Battle Creek. And to allow the number of people that the applicant said, he says, on a monthly basis will be 15,000 people coming into this store to buy their cannabis. I think that's unacceptable to make a poor neighborhood be subjected to that type of business practice in the city of Battle Creek. I'm also concerned about the people who pursue or peddle flesh in Battle Creek. There's, right now, this is probably the worst area for that culture and I'm concerned about the proliferation of that profession that would be caused by the people coming in to buy cannabis. So I'm going to continue to vote no. I'm opposed to this application. I think that we have the right places for the cannabis sales, but certainly this neighborhood, one of the poorest neighborhoods in our community is not suited for this, this special use permit and they have not met the determination. They're supposed to meet all, all nine of them. Are there any other comments?
Commissioner Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. After listening to the debate tonight, I think I concur with my colleagues and will be voting no on this resolution. I think that there are still a lot of questions to be answered and I think that they haven't met all of the criteria that were spelled out. So I appreciate the conversation and the information.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 63? And if you want to vote no, which would be concurring with the Planning Commission, you have to vote no. And if you vote yes, you're voting to approve the recommendation. Resolution 63 has not been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 64. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution supports the submittal of an application to MDOT by and on behalf of local human service agencies and Battle Creek Transit for funds in the amount of $135,341 to support transportation services to senior citizens and persons with disabilities in fiscal year 2026, covering the period of October 1, 2025 to September 30, 2026.
Move to approve Resolution 64.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 64. Are there any comments by the commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 64? Resolution 64 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 65. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
This resolution supports the submittal of an application to MDOT on behalf of Battle Creek Transit for continuation of operating funds in the amount of $229,995. in the amount of $229,995 and $87,500 in continuation of capital funds under MDOT's 5310 New Freedom Program. Additionally, if approved, this resolution supports the acceptance and execution of the grant award and authorizes the city manager to execute any agreement for the funds requested in the attached application.
Move to approve Resolution 65.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 65. Are there any comments by the Commission? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 65? Resolution 65 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 66. Madam Clerk, when you're ready.
Pursuant to Act 51 of Public Acts of 1951, as amended, it is necessary for the city of Battle Creek, established under Act 279, to provide a local transportation program for the state fiscal year of 2026 and therefore apply for state financial assistance under provisions of Act 51. This resolution authorizes the city manager to apply for both operating and capital funds to the Michigan Department of Transportation on behalf of Battle Creek Transit for fiscal year 2026 under Act Number 51 of the Public Acts of 51. Furthermore, this resolution authorizes the city manager to execute any agreements for the funds requested in the attached application.
Move to approve Resolution 66.
Support.
They've moved and supported to approve Resolution 66. Are there any comments by the Commission? Commissioner Simmons?
So, simple question, why isn't the TAC doing this? Since they now have control over our transit funding?
Yeah, as they are not yet the federal or state recipient of these dollars, we need to continue to operate as if we would be the service provider in the upcoming fiscal year. Now, the TAC, we do expect that transition to the TAC, and they'll be making a similar application. So, it'll just ultimately come down to who the FTA designates as the recipient of the funds.
Well, the TAC has recently collected many millions of dollars, but they're not able to actually execute. Are they just sitting on those funds? Or are they, did they turn those over to us to administer in the meantime?
Well, I mean, there's plenty that the TAC has to do and can do with those funds. These particular funds are the state and federal supplemental operating dollars that will allow the TAC to function on an annual basis, just like they do with us. We have our local contribution, then we have these state and federal dollars. So, the TAC is going to need both the dollars that they're collecting plus these dollars in order to be able to implement their transportation plan, just the same as it is for us.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please vote on Resolution 66? Resolution 66 has been approved. Next item on our agenda is general public comment. If you'd like to make general public comment regarding matters over which the City Commission has control, please raise your hand and wait for us to acknowledge you, and then come forward to the podium. You all have three minutes to make your comment. Please state your name and address prior to beginning your comment. Are there any general public comments at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Van Leuven. They also know me as Sherry. I live at, reside at 236 Bedford Road North, Battle Creek. I'm here today on behalf of Ward 1, MPC Planning Council Number 5. We have not met our representative, and I don't know if our representative has been informed that we meet or has been invited. So, I am here on behalf of MPC 5, Ward 1, to cordially invite our rep to come to our meetings. We meet on the second Monday at 7:00 p.m. And the word on the street is they haven't met her or him. Not sure. And I haven't followed the voting, so I'm not sure if it's him or her. And we would love to meet them and hear what they have to say at our council, at our meetings, what's going on beyond the council.
And what time is the meeting?
7:00 p.m.
Okay.
Second Monday of the month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other general public comments at this time? Yes, John?
John Kenevick, 234 South Avenue. Commissioner Simmons is absolutely right about the block grant dollars. I kind of find it interesting, if you watch the United States Congress, they keep raising the debt ceiling. And I'll guarantee you that debt ceiling comes from block grant dollars. So, we're going to kind of take a side issue for a moment and go back to Los Angeles and the burning of that area. It was discovered that a whole lots of money from the state or the federal government poured in for the homelessness in Los Angeles. Half the money was spent, but yet, the Financial Department of the elected officials reduced $17 million to the Fire Department. Now, we know that there are things outside of our control, like God, things of high winds and things of that nature. But when you're lacking fire protection or your system fails, even though you claim it's working, causes that damage that is within our control or at least might have eliminated that damage. You have taken money from the citizens in a loan for the fire protection. You are going to close fire station number three on Cliff Street. That is a key area for that neighborhood. If the winds kick up or you have a fire that jumps from one building to the other building, you'll have a very similar situation as in Los Angeles. I always find that you take nonessential things, which I'm always against, and put them towards the essential things to make sure that the citizens of Battle Creek have their property and lives protected. Unfortunately, that is not an important issue to the Commission, past and present. I've always found that you always tell other people how to live their lives and how to do things the way you want. But the city government tends to fail on those same things they expect of citizens of Battle Creek. If you're ever going to sit down and lead by example, show it. Don't tell us about it. Show us. Right now, I'm always interested in all the extra money, like I said, that goes to the nonessential things, charities and things of that nature, which is not the part of the government of Battle Creek. Unfortunately, the Commission doesn't feel that way and puts the neighbors, the citizens of Battle Creek, and their property at risk intentionally, waiting for something that happened in Los Angeles to happen to Battle Creek and its housing stock. Final last but not least, you'll know that block grant dollars have gone to the code compliance, which did an excellent job of basically intimidating and terrorizing low-income people where they vacated their buildings, having them fall in disrepair and having them demolished. Block grant dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, any Commission comments? Commissioners?
I just wanted to say that I'm the representative for MPC 5. I apologize that I did not make it to that meeting. I was aware of it. I ended up in the hospital earlier that day and was there overnight. Otherwise, I would not have missed it. So, I do plan on being there at the next one and looking forward to meeting all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commission, Patrick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Daniel Jones earlier for the presentation that he made. Just to say, this cold is very serious. Please bundle up when you go out there. I was out working today. I work outside. And I had my glove off for roughly about five minutes and lost the feeling of my fingers. It's back now, but still, just five minutes. Just please pay attention to this. It's going to be even bitterly cold tonight. So, protect yourself and your, and your pets, too, please. So, one other thing, we have a community event coming up, February 8th here. It's called the Festivus, and they were talking to me about this. It's at Lila Arboretum on February 8th. And they've been doing this for, I think it's the 19th time. They're looking at, they do a cardboard sled race, and they usually get about 40 to 50 of them. And they said, can you help us try to spread the word? Because we want to do 100 down there at Lila Arboretum. So, I just wanted to help them spread the word on this Festivus to start building your sleds now. And a great group of community people. They're going to have chili and hot dogs and hot chocolate to keep everybody warm. And hopefully, the cold weather will be gone by then, and we'll, we'll have snow. But try to support this community event. If possible, make a sled or just come down and cheer these people on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other Commission comments? Seeing none, we'll declare the meeting closed, and thank you very much for being here.